Sorry.
Can you hear us? Great. Uh, thank. Meeting after sidewalk at once by Rock Hill. Uh, we've already opened the meeting and um at the sidewalk, we've had your board, there's only Sarah Braden and Mary. Um. I'm Andy Robesey. Thank you. So uh, the agenda is short today. Why are we here on Thursday at lunchtime? I'm not hungry. Um, I didn't, I just wanted to clarify that because it's been a question and a lot of people have. Um, yeah, and um uh, for once by Rock Hill, um was filed an application for the division of their land at once by Rock Hill into two lots. And the plan was stamped in at the town clerk on March twenty fourth. Um, the application requests approval not required and under state law, the planning board has twenty one days to act on such plans. Or they become what's called constructively endorsed, which means they're automatically approved. So twenty one days would fall on this coming Monday and since our regular meeting is on Monday night, any decision made by uh, the board will be filed with, will need to be filed with the clerk on Monday. And uh, we generally meet the second and the fourth Mondays of the month and sometimes that means that there are twenty one days or even more if there's a holiday between regular meetings. If there's a town hall, town meeting, for example, falls on the fourth Monday. Um, it is our standard practice, um, when this happens, that we reach out to the applicant to ask for an extension of two days or a week or whatever's required. Um, and it, and as there is their right, they declined. So we had already planned a sidewalk for today based on the availability of our volunteer board members. So we scheduled this meeting right now to follow the sidewalk. It's our practice to always review A and R applications in public meetings, even if they are clearly entitled to A and R endorsement. We believe that the town and the applicants expect this. So, what are we going to be discussing today? Um, we are asking, we are being asked to, if the applicant is entitled to an endorsement of their plan as approval not required. Or A and R. Um, A and R approval not required means that division of land is entitled to exemptions to review under subdivision control. So what is subdivision? What's a subdivision? Because we don't have a lot of those in Manchester, so it's important for us to remember what they are. And reading from the Manchester rules and subdivision rules and regs, um subdivision rules and regs are enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience and welfare of inhabitants of the town by regulating the layout and construction of ways and subdivisions to provide proper access to several lots therein. And it goes on and um, the relevant portion, I think, is the powers of the board under the subdivision rules and regulations shall be exercised and there are a number of reasons uh, or goals, and the first of which is to provide adequate access to all lots in the subdivision by ways that are safe and convenient for travel. So our goal here is to um discuss whether or not this plan is subject to the exemptions um for review under the subdivision control or receive endorsement as approval not required. And we get these all the time, they're relatively routine. Um, we are not going to discuss aesthetics, noise, traffic or building permits that have been issued. And we're also not going to discuss the merits of other A and R plans in town that have been endorsed, been enforced by this board. Um, this is not a public hearing that has specific notice requirements and butter requirements. But I am going to uh, allow some uh, public comment, particularly if it has to do with the adequacy of access or other issues related to the A and R enforcement. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Sure. Thank you very much. Um, Adam Zager, Phil Holland Stewart in Boston, um, and I represent Tim and Liz in connection with the application. Um, we've submitted a memo to the board dated April fourth, which is in the meeting packet, um, which lays out the rationale for this. Um, but, you know, very simply, uh, the A and R analysis by the board is quite simple. If you're getting a lot is, is, the plan is not a subdivision if it has every lot on the plan with adequate area and frontage. And as we can see, we have a division of the property into two lots, lot AA, which is going to be twenty six thousand one hundred and twenty five square feet, point six acres. And that lot has continuous frontage on C Street uh, for two hundred and eighty point twenty three feet, which easily exceeds a hundred and fifty foot minimum requirement. Um, and the lot also easily exceeds the twenty two thousand five hundred square foot minimum area requirement. So we've got a lot that complies with area and frontage and therefore it's not a subdivision. Uh, because the other lot, lot AP, also contains frontage on, it's exceeding the, the minimum requirement. This is the SRA district where the minimum lot frontage is a hundred and fifty feet. And we have lot AP having a hundred and fifty four point three fives feet of frontage on Spy Rock Hill Road, while the lot also contains one point one eight acres. So therefore, it meets the area and frontage requirements. This plan does not show a subdivision and therefore it's entitled to approval endorsement uh, by the planning board. Now, that being said, we understand and we recognize that three years ago, the applicant was before the board and the the endorsement was denied and that was based upon the condition that he took it at the time. At that time, the existing condition was essentially this. So, the entrance had been graded onto the property and sort of accrued part in the area, but it was not what it is today. And today, the access says the board just saw our site visit currently exists. We all walked from streets, from streets from C Street up the access point. Um, we all saw that there's a, there's a truck there. Um, trucks have been using that access for construction purposes for months now, or even to build the foundation or the slab that's there, the garage. Um, it's going to be a moment here showing the truck access. Uh, so importantly, si- since this project started, um, we have been able to determine that and it was, I think it would be a surprise to the board that um a driveway entrance can be constructed here. Um, in October of two thousand twenty four, in response to some uh, neighbor inquiries, we understand the planning board had looked into this project, DPW had looked into this project. Tim and Liz buttoned down on their design to determine, you know, what exactly the dimensions would be for a driveway access point on C Street. And we'll see in the materials that we submitted um, that we include a surveyor certificate because as it turns out, this driveway design here that can be constructed and, and it's largely been constructed to date, it needs every single dimensional criteria in section forty six of the bylaw. I'm not sure if, if board has had a chance to review our surveyor certificate, but I can run through it. The, the, the minimum distance to the nearest intersection, twenty feet and we provide forty four point one feet. The minimum distance to the nearest driveway or fire hydrant, ten feet, here we have eleven feet, ten inches. Uh, minimum distance to the side lot line, trees, utility poles, or streetlight fixtures, five feet. Here we have eight point nine uh, visibility, we've showed a visibility range. There are the additional plans that, that Tim has submitted to DPW and the building department because we do anticipate filing for a driveway entrance permit at some point in this project, depending upon whether things change or whether the A and R is, is granted. But um, there's a lot of material out there that, that, that the DPW and the planning and, and, and Paul Orlando have reviewed in anticipation of that potential permit. But to go on, um, drainage, we're going to have, we're going to meet, meet the drainage requirements um by having a twelve foot wide drain trough running through the curb captures, all water runoff at the street entrance. Um, the maximum curb cut allowed is one, we're going to have one maximum driveways for residential use. Again, right now, it's just one residential use, so there's only one driveway. Um, the driveway with the approach of the entrance, the driveway eight to twelve feet, we're compliant, twelve feet. The maximum common driveway flare, three feet, we're compliant, three feet. Maximum curb curving turn, three feet, again, compliant, three feet. Um, sidewalk and roadway construction, it's going to be all per the MAAB and ADA DPW standards. And we're going to use um, pervy materials. So really, as this project evolved, we were able to determine that this is feasible. It is a driveway entrance that complies with every single uh, criteria in the bylaw. And, and more importantly, because that's not even relevant to the A and R analysis, which is just, is it illusory? And I think this is what I saw today, it's, it's, it's the opposite of a loser. It's real, it exists on the ground, it provides access, it's been used for construction. Um, you know, and therefore it, it meets the standard under the bylaw, we think, pretty easily. Um, I know the board chair said you didn't want to talk about other cases, but we think this is an exact parallel to George K. May.
I'm not going to discuss, that's each, each case is different, so I'm not going to, we're not even going to spend any time on that.
Well, I would, I would point out that it's actual and it's existing and in Forest Road, there is no access, it exists in those lots.
Yeah, we're not going to talk about Forest Road.
That's fine.
Um, or any other A and R for that honor. Okay, um, I, I have a couple of questions, but um, any other kind of things, yeah, go ahead.
I, I said, a, a, a couple of procedural points, I just wanted to be sure. I, I um, and, and as part of our memorandum, we submitted um we submitted the town, uh, uh, a town council memo from April of two thousand twenty two. Uh, we saw in the meeting packet, there's a new uh, memo from town council, April third, twenty five. We would appreciate that, we noted, this was dated April fourth and our submission was dated April second. It appears to us that this memo from town council that we reviewed didn't have the benefit of seeing our submittal. Um, I mean, all the only, it, it said that the analysis is property specific, but it didn't mention any details other than things that were apparent from the A and R plan. So we think it's important that the record be updated to include the request by the planning board to town council that, that resulted.
I think so.
Because I think it's.
Right, so it was like, yeah, no, we did ask in the.
Doesn't look like they reviewed any of the, the submittals that we provided. Um, we also noted that the meeting packet didn't include any kind of memo from the town planner. Uh, our understanding is the town planner has issued an opinion uh, that this plan is entitled to endorsement. Um, he's not here today and he, he advised us he wouldn't be here today, but in light of that, we thought that should be part of the record.
We don't have a memo from the town planner.
But he's indicated verbally, so to me, as I, you know, yesterday.
I don't have it, we don't have any memo from the town planner.
Sorry, so he is not a memo, but he didn't issue an opinion, a verbal opinion at all.
Not to the board. So.
Well, that's contrary to what he represented to me yesterday and what I emailed you yesterday. Um, but so like, I would just ask that be noted in the record. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Um, I do have one, uh, two questions.
Sure.
If this is the access, why would you build the common driveway?
It's, it's really double extended, so we're entitled to do both. The um, that driveway is there, it, it's available. Um, if the board were to, I mean, really, it provides better access. Why would the board be, uh, why would we not want to have a property that could be accessed from two directions as opposed to just one?
For who?
Um, okay, the second question I have is your driveway that you've shown here is, is based on a, it, it sort of appears to be a flat site. So we require, again, significant ledge removal, correct? Because clearly the street level to.
It's already done.
No, no, that's not what's there now. You don't have two foot grade from the street to twelve feet up the, up the.
I think that's been filled, this been brought in, this can, this, to construct this.
You, you definitely do not have two feet.
To construct this, require no further lifting. And if you did, if you did, we could apply for a permit, so it's.
Okay, um.
The, but, but I think the, the, the real question is, I wasn't on the question, but the permitting matters are not subject to, are not part of an A and R analysis. And town council made that very clear in its two thousand twenty two memo. You do not need to have a driveway entrance permit in order to apply for A and R. There's just, it's just not part of the analysis. The, the A and R analysis doesn't consider building, it doesn't consider zoning, it doesn't consider code, it doesn't consider intentions, it doesn't consider future projects, current projects, anything other than just area and frontage. So it's a very limited analysis. I mean, the board may have a number of questions about this project um, that may or may not come back in for jurisdiction. But right here today is a very simple question. Does it have the area, does it have the frontage? And, you know, is access somehow illusory? And I think as we all saw today, it's clearly not. It's there, it exists on the ground, it's been created pursuant to valid building permits. Um, there's no notice of violation of any kind. Uh, and the applicant has been working directly with DPW and, and the planning, uh, and, and the planning, the building department. Um, there's a very long string of emails that we're happy to share and go into that show that this has been under constant review by Chuck Dan, by Paul Orlando. And uh, and it's in full compliance and if we've been, you know, we submitted a driveway entrance permit, um, you know, we're very likely to have it approved. Just, we, we, so it's really, you know, this is so close to, you know, a finished product. It's, it's not even anywhere near what, you know, the case law would indicate would be illusion. Illusion is something that's fake, it doesn't exist, it's not, it, it, it's here. And we're able to use it to build a, you know, a, a, a foundation path. So it, it's, you know, there, there may be lots of questions that you have, but they're, they're just not relevant to an A and R.
Other questions from the board?
So I do have questions that are not related to the A and R, so we'll have to address that at a different time. Um, I, my personal opinion is this is no different than what was brought to us in two thousand twenty two. Um, you have temporary access to do the utility trench. Um, it seems like one town department, um, okay, that and another town department said you could use that for construction access. I still see, see street frontage as illusory. Um, there's no way, safety wise, fire truck, excuse me, safety wise, um, it could be accessible by fire trucks, police, um, with delivery trucks. Um, I do not see the frontage on C Street, um, so that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Any questions or comments? Um, I do want to correct, uh, at least our, our council has advised that the board must determine whether it's adequate present threshold access to the lot from its frontage on C Street. Um, reliant on the specific geography of the lot in question, at issue. Additional considerations include whether emergency service can access the lot, whether the main portions of the lot are practically, practically accessible. Um, and uh, um, so I just, I'll, I'll put that out, put, state that right now. That's, that's the task that our council has advised. Um, Peter or Sue, any questions? Or comments? Okay, um, I will take some, any brief comments from uh, the public, particularly as they relate to the adequacy of access or uh, frontage or area that you have observed in the plan.
Just one question.
Can you share some?
Alan Wilson, five Spyrock Hill, thank you. Um, I believe the, the board has received a letter from Scott Susko of six Spyrock Hill. I just want to be sure that's in the record.
We have received a letter from Scott Susko, thank you. Any other comments? Um, so, um, so I, I'm going to just re, also quote again from the, um, elsewhere in the uh, council's um, memo that it's about threshold access and delineate that the provisions um, access the main portions of the lot. And I think, um, I guess I should also report that we did take a sidewalk out there. We walked on the common driveway from Spyrock Hill and we walked up the utility trench path, stairway, uh, construction access. Um, steep gravel. Uh, construction access. Um, so I'll take, add, any other discussion? Yeah.
Could I, I, I mentioned it on our walk, so, but now that we're here, just want to clear.
Can, can you introduce yourself for the record, please?
House of Rice, seventeen Washington Street.
Thank you.
Concerned as I expressed at the site, is it having a driveway there? It's an extremely dangerous situation. We see it daily, I cross there a couple of times a day, very least. I mentioned earlier, I have a ten year old grandson who I cross with sometimes, my wife crosses, we watch other people cross. It's a very dangerous intersection. To allow a driveway to come down in that intersection, as I said, is an excellent way to happen. They've got enough there. I don't understand why another driveway is even necessary. I'll even accept the fact that it can be used for construction. But to allow it to be used as a driveway that, that will be allowed to have UPS truck, FedEx trucks constantly up that driveway instead of going up Spyrock Hill and going into their property. There's enough access as it is to that property. I don't feel we need another one, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, uh, I acknowledge that the letter from Scott Susko has been uh, entered into the record. And that being the case, we'd like to enter into the record, our, um, we have a two page uh, back sheet where we try to, uh, and we reviewed that letter yesterday and we were disappointed to see it. We, we don't, uh, we understand that construction is disruptive to neighbors and this has been a, a, uh, it's been a long project and uh, we, we understand that and recognize that. Um, but we think that there have been a lot of misconceptions about this project. Um, and the planning board may have some of these misconceptions and we think it's really important to dispel some of them. Um, the most important one is, eh, from the letters, that, the letter said that access to C Street has been denied two ti- multiple times previously and, and that's just, that's not the case. What happened was that the applicant applied for an A and R plan and the, and the board declined to give the endorsement because they found that at the time, the access was illusory. This is not a situation where Tim and Liz applied to get access to street, C Street. They were rejected and, and now they're coming back. Everybody is entitled, if they don't get an A and R plan, to lawfully change the physical conditions on their property and try to go back to the board at such time, uh, when they feel that, that the access is no longer illusory. And that's exactly what they've done here, trying to listen to some of the guidance that the board provided at the two thousand twenty two hearing. Including which is, why don't you have a common driveway coming from Spyrock Hill? Um, and so that's part of the reason why the new plan we wanted to present included that common driveway. Because it was part of the record, I think it was Ucris that had mentioned that in two thousand twenty two. Um, and then the second misconception is, you know, that it was stated in, in Scott's letter that this project was a charade and that some sort of attempt to mislead the, the town. And that's just absolutely not the truth. The, the one Spyrock Hill project, he isn't changing. Uh, the currently approved project is an accessory building that is going to be used for Liz's office to do her pottery, and Tim's office. They need space. Um, if you've ever seen Liz's pottery, you know, she does great work. You need to spread out for a pottery operation, you need kilns, you need wheels. Um, so nothing is changing that with this project. They, they, they're simply, you know, as part of the process, they've inherited the property. Um, trying to think long term, what's the long term plan? How do we want to hold this asset? And they've decided, you know, because they have the requisite area and frontage that they wanted to subdivide it and that's their right to do. But there's, there's nothing that, there, there's no hidden games here. There's nothing planned to build multiple houses or even ADUs that was mentioned. Uh, this is, this is nothing about that. The project is absolutely just exactly what it is. They're building in addition to their house with a garage and they're building accessory building, it's going to be a pottery studio. Um, the next misconception, I think this goes to, to manage some of the questions that you had asked us at the site visit. You know, don't we need a driveway entrance permit? And, and the answer to that is actually no. Our bylaw requires driveway entrance permit to be issued before building permit. Only if that structure is going to need a, a new driveway. But this doesn't because it has access from Spyrock Hill. So that's the reason why no driveway entrance permit is needed to, for a building permit for this project. Um, I think that's a big misconception that, that people have around town. Somehow, how did this happen? Why don't they have a, a driveway entrance permit? And the short answer is you just don't need it. That additional access down on Spyrock Road is, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to provide access, but you've got belt and suspenders where you have a perfectly adequate driveway coming in from another direction. Um, the other misconception, and I, I saw this a lot, um, there were a bunch of social media comments, was that somehow this is like bad, this is, you know, this is an inappropriate project. And it's, when you take a step back, it really isn't. It's, actually, the, the, the site contains one point seven eight acres and you only need twenty two thousand five hundred for a residential lot. So this site, and I think that also was referenced in Scott's letter about how many years ago they originally wanted to do three houses here. Um, that's no longer the case, but it's, it has enough area, if it had the frontage, to do three houses. So in an environment where we're talking about a housing crisis and we're trying to create opportunities for more housing any place we can downtown, it's, it's perfectly appropriate for have housing to get on this lot to create a separate additional residential lot, single family residential lot here because you've got plenty of area.
All right, so can we just focus on the, the, the access question? Because that really is the question, not the.
Sure, well, I mean.
Whether or not this should be divided or we have a housing crisis, but.
Sure, well, again, the, the other, you know, that highly inflammatory letter is on the record now, so we really feel a need to, to respond to it. But I, I will try and limit this and hopefully you can just omit the.
We have, okay.
To the record, the, the, this for the record. But the other piece that I just wanted to say is that, uh, you know, there's been this notion that somehow Tim and Liz are in violation um, of our law. And it's really important to them, you know, Tim is, especially to Tim as an architect, uh, and a contractor, that board understand that's not the case. They have made a really diligent effort to comply to the letter of the law. As soon as we heard from, uh, the town last year that people were having issues with this project, that's when I became involved. Uh, we were, I think we met the day afterward with Greg Lattersfield and Chuck Dan. Tim has been emailing the Chuck and Paul for, for months. We have a timeline of all of the emails. I don't want to share this and this, I don't think the board needs to get into this level of detail. But there's been extensive discussion and conversations between Tim, Chuck and Paul to the point where Chuck has basically told us, and I can provide the email, and I will, that this design is, is acceptable. Uh, as, and, but again, we don't need to get there because this isn't the driveway entrance here. It's, isn't, you know, the entire record that you would see for a driveway entrance isn't before you. And at some point, you know, in the future, it might be, but we wanted to just make clear that this is, we've been in really deep discussions with Paul and Chuck. Um, every step of the way, when safety concerns were raised about this project, Tim was on the phone like that moment to really get in there, show engineering plans, dispel all of those.
Okay, so let's just stick to whether or not we have access.
So.
Can I just clarify that the board there is a plan, not what's on the ground? If that is not an asphalt.
That is, that is not an asphalt.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
That is probably the final point of that.
Okay.
And again, I, I just, I guess just to wrap up, I, I, I would also quote from the town's um, prior memo where they have advised factors such as the quality of access, lack of required permit, that on the limited scope, A and R would be allowed under the statute. And it's not the given list of the planning board to anticipate land of required permit to be impervent or, or might not occur. But again, this is just a question of is access there? Does it exist? And I think that we all saw today, it does, so hopefully board can.
Can I just say something to access? Uh, sure. Because you, you keep bringing that up as, as a really important issue. We, we have an approved built common driveway from Spyrock to what could be the next property. Is that by itself adequate access to the property? Possibly. We, other projects have been approved with only a common drive. But how could there be any question of access from C Street when we're accessing the property from C Street to build the project? That's my main question. Why is access a question?
So there are guidelines, you know, the A and R process is unique to Massachusetts. And it's kind of a silly thing you have to go through. We're basically saying that we don't have to approve it. But there's, there are guidelines that we're supposed to follow in issuing this endorsement. Proven is not required. One of the conditions is that there be adequate frontage that complies with zoning. First and second, that there be adequate access to the lot from that frontage. So that's why we are so concerned about this, excuse me, the C Street analysis.
No, so my question is, how is it not obvious that there is adequate access from the frontage on C Street? Or maybe it is to you, maybe it's, maybe it's totally obvious.
Uh, I don't think it's ob- obvious, I, um, no, it's, it's, the situation is, well, I, I'm, is this the time to?
I mean, I can answer that for me.
Right. Whether or not, can I just go back to the criteria that this, that the council has provided for us? Consider adequate present threshold access to the lot. Met additional considerations, whether emergency services can access the lot and whether the main portions of the lot are practically accessible, practically accessible, presumably from the frontage. Um, so, um, so, the, um.
So for me, yeah, so the, the question is, as the attorney said, if, if there is frontage. Frontage means that you have to be able to, um, access from a public way safely. Um, to me, that is, again, same criteria as in two thousand twenty two, very steep slope. Um, it is illusory, you have a temporary, um, kind of pieced together access for construction access and a utility trench. And that happens all over town. And then those need to get right back to how they were prior to construction. No one would ever grant most of those as um, acceptable driveway. No one would ever grant most of those as um acceptable driveway entrances. Um and in this particular ca- case with the topography of the site, it is not a safely accessible frontage on a public way, in my opinion.
Can I respond to that because it's very important?
I'd just like to enter into this record. Um an email that an email chain between Tim and Chuck Dan where Chuck has reviewed this plan as well as some other detailed drawings that Tim has provided. Um and his uh reply, the final reply, and this is March twentieth, so this is just a few weeks ago. Hi, Tim. I'm saying you talked to the fire chief, but as long as he is good, I have nothing from a DPW perspective. In the event you apply to the PV, I can't say they won't ask me for some other info, but as of now, I am satisfied. There's nothing more I require. So I'd like to enter that into the record.
Can you clarify satisfied with what?
Yes, I can. Yeah, yeah, I can. I can do that. And I think it's
And we we need to see the email. I mean, I
Yeah, we've got all the emails and we can send them.
Yeah, we did. Please, I did.
Uh but that is that is the end of a seven month process. And the process was this. DPW came to us and said, we have a concern that you have a a a safety issue accessing your property from where you're accessing property. I said, fine, let's walk through the process. What does it mean for us to have a safe access from the street to the buildable portion of our lot? That started in um eight in uh August of two thousand twenty-four. But prior to that um in April of two thousand twenty-two, and I have the emails to prove it. Before we went for our A and R, our last A and R, I went to DPW to make sure that if you remember, as part of our A and R process, we actually provided a compliant driveway uh engineered driveway from C Street to the property. It was engineered, completely worked out as evidence that we could access our property from C Street to the buildable portion of the lot. DPW with their email of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two said, I don't mind if you let the planning board know that we met and I didn't have any DPW issues with the curb cut. Okay, that was in two thousand twenty-two.
But again, Tim
Two September, two two August?
I really need to go through
Yeah, no.
I don't think we need to go through a whole year of
No, they
The point is, the point is though, that that there's this, the 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 DPW and the building department have been intimately involved. And if this was a case that that access was illusory and this would just be impossible, then what have what have they been wasting their time for for the last year?
Well, so unfortunately, um the DPW and planning and uh building inspector don't rule on approval not required plans. So um that what we have before us is an approval not required plan that the planning board has to act on. Uh Sue or Peter, any comments? Oh, you have to unmute.
Good now. Um so part of the problem here is that the original agreement was to return this area back to its more or less original state. And now all of a sudden, forget that. Now we want to build a driveway.
There's no agreement. That's not accurate.
Absolutely not true.
Now, there's a site plan from um twenty, uh I have a site plan that was submitted by you folks um that says exactly, you know.
That's been superseded though by additional violence.
Sorry, I'm sorry. When could you tell me anywhere that's
Wait, Greg, Greg, what I'm gonna ask Greg to clarify, do you have a clarification on that?
I think I do.
Yes.
Um you know, preface it by saying, what has been there's there's been no official approval for any driveway and specifically um agreed to in writing that there is now a driveway. For how the curb cut is now a driveway. The um condition as part of the existing building permit is to reestablish the existing conditions. That's part of the building permit. That was a condition that Chuck put in and it was confirmed by Mr. McDonald. So that that is a condition of existing permit.
And I think um we have a site plan that has uh notes to that effect and um and I will say that uh not a sibling, well, actually not a sibling chair, but I'm not a practicing civil engineer. And I think that there are some uh fairly distinct change sidewalk uh issues there that that don't comply with this site plan. So that's another, that's not for today, but that's another um
But you mentioned, but that's a permitting question.
That's right, absolutely.
That is not, that doesn't have anything to do with whether access is illusory. Tim has every right to file a driveway entrance permit application that shows this plan and and to construct it as long as the required permit is issued.
So I just want to make sure that you that the that the board, at least my opinion is that the board um that this is a plan. We saw a plan in two thousand twenty-two and made a determination that that was a uh as if it was a flat site, at least in my mind. And I I see that the grade, um again, it seems to me that a a four foot grade change twenty feet or thirty feet up the road is certainly not what's out there today. Um from uh so, okay, I think um Sue or Peter, any other, um I think we've kind of um got the facts. Any new fa- any new considerations?
Yes, I have
Um well
I have a consideration.
Yeah.
Um I think it's very important that we all uh take a step back and ask yourselves whether you think we have access to the buildable portion of our lot currently from C Street. The idea that the board could possibly suggest that we don't have ac- actual access to our building lot from C Street is very, very hard for me to understand here. If this is what we are talking about, I I think I I think we should take a minute. It's one thing if a board member believes that something should be, should have been. It's another thing to know and it's a whole nother issue as to whether you think it's quote steep or not. But after a seven month process, working with DPW, asking all of those questions, the steepness of the of the access, the ability to turn around on top, the ability, how safe it was arriving at the street. All of that stuff, if you're ignoring that, but most importantly, ignoring what is actually there. This would be
I'd like to just speak to that for a minute. Um actually, that's my biggest biggest issue.
Okay.
Is that it goes to the main portions of the site. And what I see out there is an excavated um basement.
Right.
So I have to ignore what you have put in as a building uh site.
Okay.
It's because it's as if it doesn't exist. And the main portions of the site from the grade where that bottom of the foundation is today up to where we stood on the top of the common driveway is probably a twenty foot difference. Still ledge. So that main portions of the site are still which are still um up a steep slope and ledge. That's what I see.
Wait, you're saying that I have to get to the other side of the lot? Because you pull up the the access that's current and pull into a garage inside the building. So we're actually inside the building. And that's not considered the main part of the of the lot?
The the existing construction access to me is different and its steepness is different than uh fire and Amazon truck access of a steep lot. So I'm gonna
We've reviewed this. I've reviewed this with DPW and
DPW doesn't weigh in on A and Rs. Okay, we're gonna stop. And are we
Well, I I wouldn't make this note then, because it sounds like you're saying that the access, that there's illusory access to the 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 concrete ad that's going to serve as the garage. So you can drive from C Street up the up the up the the accessway and pull in to the garage. You 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 saw a truck there today.
I can't drive my car up there. I don't think we can drive a ladder truck up there. Uh that's my opinion. Um I don't think an Amazon truck could go up there.
It meets the requirements of the fire. I I just got the I just got the requirements of the fire uh of fire trucks and it needs the current grade meets those requirements. So
So the fire department and the DPW and and the building inspector don't weigh in on A and Rs. So um the board, what do we
That's because it happens afterwards.
What do we uh what do we have a um sense of the board about how we want to act here?
Okay, I just have a couple of comments on this. Yeah, it's very difficult to to try to um you know, single out the process that we've gone through and the substance of what the plan. They there's kind of connected and it makes it difficult to figure out what the heck is going on here. There are two things that are troubling me frankly. One is the original plan showed a utility trench going along where this driveway now is. And that was what the building inspector approved. And suddenly it's become a construction access. And maybe he approved it. But it seems um not clear as to how this all happened. The second thing, which my real question is, why do you need to subdivide this property at all if this is a uh an accessory structure that's going to be um uh an architect's office and a pottery shed? Why do you need to separate these properties? And uh so it just that seems illusory to me also, I guess.
Well, it's their it's their right to do so. It's
Of course, it's their right, but given the history of how this is going, you know, we do A and Rs quite frequently. We've never had one quite so controversially as this.
Can I add a third concern that I should have is if you really have access to the accessory building that you're proposing, why would you build a common driveway to serve it? Um and not have come in. And I also don't understand why you didn't come in with a subdivision plan. It would have been a lot less expensive than building the um
Because a subdivision plan is three units or more.
You can also have a two uh two unit subdivision.
It's also a lot more engineering and work to do. I mean, I
Well, that's
to us is
and more oversight for the town, which is the sort of the purpose.
But I think also related to it's easier to bring the utilities back through and having a separate, you know, potential access from that point will be convenient for the uh the new building if, you know, if the gravel and the privates
And I guess the the most important thing, Chris, I I understand that there is controversy. I understand that there's there are things you you're not sure why we did this or whether it makes sense for us to have our our office and our pottery transform into a house for her uh father and my aging mother. I understand that you wouldn't necessarily know those answers. But I think they're so irrelevant to the issue because the issue is so cut and dried here. We if we have access to the buildable portion of our lot, threshold access is about crossing the threshold and getting access to the buildable portion of the lot. It has nothing to do with slope, nothing.
And all of these questions that we're talking about, about permitting, I mean, they're they're all valid questions, but they're just beyond the scope of an A and R, which is
I agree beyond that.
Okay, so it's convenient.
We 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 expect that that, you know, if we expect to potentially be here again, talking about a lot of these issues.
Okay. Right.
But it's just not part of, this will be the first time, if this A and R isn't endorsed, I think it'll be the first time I've ever seen an A and R endorsed in Mass- not not endorsed in Massachusetts, where you have access that's actually existing and been used to build a foundation.
Okay, thank you. Um Sue or Peter, any further comments?
Uh just one more on the access issue. Um it's the reason why you think you have access is because you're not following the original agreement to put the utility trench and construction access back to the original state.
Okay, um. Does anybody want to make a motion? Or
I'll make a motion.
Great, thank you, Sue.
Okay. Um I move that the planning board deny the application and withhold endorsement of the plan is not requiring approval under the subdivision control law. On the basis that, as shown on the plan and the documentation submitted to the planning board and based on the board's observations at a site visit and subsequent discussion, access to lot eight A from C Street is illusory uh due to the topography and steep grade of lot A, as well as the other factors that were discussed and observed.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mary, second. Any other discussion? Um okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Um I'll see the chair votes, yes, Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, um uh and that procedure. Um thank you, everybody, for taking time today. I know it's uh out of order um and uh challenging um. Thank you. Um I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second. Uh on favor?
I
And thank you, Shannon, also for helping us today. Okay, thank you. Uh Shannon, there is request that these get scanned into the record.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's
All right.
Well, I think we get on a Zoom. Um
All of this?
Yeah, I'll take a ride. Let's go back.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. And um I will uh send you the um decision to record um with the town. Yeah.
The better to be shut off.
Yeah, thank you.
Figured out earlier, it's like wicked, it was like eighty.